My name is Lisa Pope. I'm the president of the Upper Downtown Neighborhood Association, UPDONA. UPDONA and LADONA, the Lower Downtown Neighborhood Association, are the hosts [inaudible 00:01:18]. Are the hosts of this Fair Election Fund District 10 Candidate Forum. Thanks to all of you for attending, our candidates and our moderator. Thank you very much. David?
How's that? Okay. As long as it's better than Lisa, that's okay. So I'm David Muzaki, and I'm on the Board of Directors for LADONA. And just, I just want to do a couple of acknowledgements. First of all, cell phones, if everybody could make sure your cellphone is on silent mode, that would be great. We don't want any disruptions. We also want to acknowledge the hard work of many volunteers that came together and collaborated to make this event possible. So we've been on a committee, we've been spending a lot of time putting this together, and I'm really happy to see the turnout tonight. The other thing, too, is we want to acknowledge Home2 Suites for hosting this event and very graciously, you know, allowing us to use this venue. I think it's, I think it's a really nice place to hold this thing. Without further delay, I want to introduce our moderator, Alvis Brooks, former Denver City Councilman for District 9, as well as the president of Denver City Council. So he's going to be our moderator tonight. With that, I'm going to hand it over to you. So, thank you. Good to see you guys. I want to first just compliment you for showing up. This is an important election in our city, and nothing happens without engagement and without you guys showing up. And so I really, I really commend you. And now I'm going to tell you, go bring a neighbor next time and come even deeper, because it's important that we, this is going to be an important election for us. I also want to acknowledge, I think we had two officers in here. Can you guys stand up real quick? Will you give a hand to these gentlemen? In a time in our neighborhoods where crime is up and there's a lot going on and a lot of conversations, there are folks who put their life on the line every day, and so we really appreciate you. And lastly, I know what it takes to run for office, and I know what the sacrifice is, so please give it up for our candidates as well. Thanks for putting yourself out there. It's not easy. So at this time, I'd like to introduce your candidates. At the end of the introduction, the audience will have an opportunity to applaud all candidates. I'm going to be a stickler about this. If you talk, if you do all that kind of stuff, I'm going to call you out, so don't do it. After which, we'll ask for silence for all of the room other than the person speaking. And so ladies and gentlemen, from left to right, in alphabetical order, here are your candidates. Chris Hines, who is the incumbent for District 10, Shannon Hoffman, Noah Kaplan, and Margie Morris. Now you can give them a round of applause. Let's, let's talk about the plans for tonight. Each candidate will be given 2 minutes and 30 seconds, which is a lot more time than the other debates that you've been seeing. So we encourage you guys to get into some specificity of your plans. We want to know what your top priorities are. The context is around how we're addressing issues in Denver and why you would be the best candidate. After that, I will ask questions to each candidate for 2 minutes and 30 seconds to answer the same question. After all the candidates have answered, I'll move to the next question, and we'll alternate the order in which candidates answer questions. There will be a 15-minute break at 7 o'clock. We ask that you don't run to the candidates and say, "Hey, give us a little bit more information." Let them go to the bathroom so they can get back, and we can continue on in the debate, because this is going to be for about two hours. At the end of the evening, each candidate will give a 2-minute closing. And so let's talk a little bit about the general concerns. Really don't have to. You guys could list the concerns of the downtown area, but this is what we're going to be focused on, focused by the leadership of UPDONA and LADONA. Many of the members of several downtown businesses fall mainly into three categories. These are also some of the primary emphasis of UPDONA and LADONA. The categories are homelessness, drug addiction and mental illness, crime and its impact on safety, and the downtown's economic recovery and reopening of businesses. The questions we'll be asking reflect our desire to see an understanding of your plans to address the issues in downtown Denver. Couple, couple rules before we begin. One, the audience is asked to refrain from applauding, making any verbal comments whatsoever during the debate. Please remember that everyone has come tonight to hear the candidates, not you. You can run next time. And so please just respect that. We really want to hear them and put them on display tonight. Candidates are asked not to comment or interrupt each other. Civility is what we want to show as a role model, even though nationally that's not happening. We have a tight timeline tonight. Answers will be limited, as I said before, to 2 minutes and 30 seconds, and nonverbal 30-second warning. So we have our timekeeper up here doing that. Candidates are asked to avoid generalities and provide specific, comprehensive answers to your questions. So, let's begin. At this time, I'd like to have the candidates give us their opening statements. Candidates, please remember that you have 2 minutes and 30 seconds for your opening statement, and we'll begin with Chris Hines.
Hello. Oh, this thing is on. Hi, my name is Chris Hines. I serve on Denver City Council, representing District 10. I like to call it Denver's Perfect 10. Hopefully others do, too. I, I'm the first elected official in Denver's history, local, state, or federal, who uses a wheelchair for mobility. And by the way, this is the opening that I gave before Monday night, so it hasn't changed, even with the events on Monday night. But I am not a career politician. I grew up in rural Texas. I grew up poor. I didn't have air conditioning, didn't have, didn't have a TV growing up, but, but I went to college. I was the first in my family to go to college. I went to Southern Methodist University on a full scholarship, got a computer science degree, went back and got an MBA in finance. And so, you know, I've been in the business community for a while. I promised that I would never run for office. I found a loophole. August 26, 2008, I was in a crash. I went from being a runner and a soccer player to using a wheelchair to get around. The disability community is the only community that you can join at any time, the only protected class that you can join at any time, whether you like it or not. So, back to promising that I'd never run for office. Well, I found a loophole. I rolled for office instead. Yes, wheelchair joke. So, you know, I think it's important that our, our democracy is representative of all the people, and so I'm very honored that the people of District 10 gave me the opportunity to break a barrier and be the first to, to represent the disability community on council. Current events have demonstrated why that's important, but, but I'll just leave that there for, for now. I, actually, I think we all, all four of us live within just a few blocks of one another. So I would say I live downtown, but, but you know that already. So I'll just say, my name is Chris Hines. I'm really excited about where we are in Denver today, and I'm even more excited about making Denver an even better place than it already is. Thank you.
Great. Shannon Hoffman.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shannon Hoffman. I am here because I love my community, and love is a really rooted part of this run for me. I am a renter, just like 70% of the people that live in District 10. And there aren't any renters on Denver City Council right now, even though we make up more than 50% of the city. I come from a working-class background. My mother is a hairdresser, and my dad is a mail carrier. I have been an educator for more than a decade. I've worked several retail jobs in Denver, some at local small businesses. And currently, I work for a nonprofit that's developing a multimillion-dollar affordable housing and grocery store project on a former RTD park-and-ride site. I am a vocal advocate for tenants' rights, because my neighbors and I are living Denver's housing crisis every day. Our rents are going up with no end in sight unless we elect city council members like myself, who will fight for and implement rent control. Many of our neighbors are facing eviction without any right to legal defense, which often leads to homelessness, an issue that we as a city choose to criminalize instead of investing in what we know works, what I believe we all know works and want, which is to house people. That is why I have gathered signatures and knocked on hundreds of doors for No Eviction Without Representation last year. And in 2020, I led a team of community researchers with the group Allies to Abolitionists, filing more than 60 Colorado open records requests to uncover that sweeps of our unhoused neighbors cost us as taxpayers between $5,000 to $20,000 every single time we do that. And I think we'll have more of an opportunity to talk about those things later with the questions. But I'm just really happy for the opportunity to be here with you all tonight and get to chat more about some creative, innovative ideas for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah Kaplan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Noah Kaplan. I am born and raised here in Denver. I am a proud graduate of DPS schools. My parents were public defenders growing up, and they instilled in me a really strong civic sense. We had great values in my home of civility, civic and social responsibility, and our responsibility to provide for the needs of our community. I used that upbringing as a bearing in my young adult life and decided that I wanted to go and be a teacher. So I went and I got a teaching degree. I returned to my alma mater of East High School in Angels. Maybe a couple. Sorry, audience participation. And I went back to school, and I returned to that campus that I had grown up on, and I got to direct the speech and debate program there for the last seven years, which put me in touch with a very diverse group of over 200 students and their families, which really helped me learn about the challenges facing the Denver community and the challenges facing the educators who serve that community. So after seven years as a teacher, I looked up to have been priced out of my, out of homeownership and basically out of the rental market as well. And I started to see how that impacted the, my colleagues and the families that we served. We saw families leaving from their freshman year to their senior year. I had students move from within a five-minute drive to a 45-minute drive. That meant kids were falling asleep in my classroom. That meant teachers were quitting their jobs. We see decreased enrollment in DPS. So we see how all of these issues are tied together. I got a second job, like many teachers do, to try and make ends meet. And given that my training was in English, I took on a freelance journalist role with Denver Westward, covering City Hall, covering our mismanagement of the homelessness epidemic and criminal justice reform. It gave me a great insight into how the city operates and the ways in which there's a disconnect between the rules that are written in City Hall and how those rules impact our community, our businesses, our homes, and our schools. I'm running to bring creativity, imagination, good faith deliberation, and better connections between service providers, constituents, agencies, and departments inside the city government. Let's create a unified effort to address the issues facing our city. It's the only way they get done.
Great. Margie?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank all the organizers for making this evening possible, and thank all of you for being here. I do, before I start my response, do want to say, as I've, as I've said to many of you on that campaign trail, I really applaud, Chris, the work that you've done for accessibility in our city and for lifting the veil on that. And I know Chris always says, you know, he wants it to be a learning opportunity, and I would greet with that. And I would ask that all of us take this opportunity to reflect at home and at work and in our neighborhoods and be thinking about accessibility and whether those spaces are not only ADA compliant, but they are truly welcoming to everyone. So, I know I'm supposed to be answering the questions, but I would like to throw a couple out to you guys. How many folks in the room feel that Denver is worse off today than it was four years ago? How many folks in the room are frustrated or even angry that we haven't seen real progress in solving homelessness in a sustainable way for the people who are experiencing homelessness? I agree. I'm with you. And I think that alone means that we need a change in leadership. This is an incredibly well-resourced city. It has an incredibly generous population that has approved tax increases for so many things, for expanding mental health, for protecting our environment, for reducing food insecurity, and for building affordable housing. But we haven't had the leadership to really use those resources effectively, and I think that it's time that we do. My first experience with understanding homelessness was through a domestic violence shelter, where I met women and their children who were victims and survivors of domestic violence. They were without a home, they were struggling to figure out how they were going to get their kids into the local schools, and it made an impact on me. And ever since then, I've been fighting for populations that are overly criminalized and are constantly facing housing insecurity. I'm a small business owner, a nonprofit leader, with two years of experience in sheltering and housing and a lot of other components that intersect with homelessness. And I have the experience and the temperament to bring those resources together, community resources, community dollars, and solve these problems. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We are off and running. And now I'm going to ask you a series of questions. We have about seven questions that we're going to dig into, and I'll set them up this way. Always do an introduction and give you a question. So, here's the introduction. Many of the people camping on the streets of Denver are seen as so-called "service-resistant" and refuse offers of help of housing and services. They often are violating the Denver's camping ban, and, which was put in place 10 years ago, and in 2019 it was affirmed with over 81% of Denver voters. UPDONA and LADONA believe it is inhumane to allow people to continue to live on the streets, exposed to the elements of crime. Do you support the camping ban? If not, why not? If so, how do you plan to bring about more effective enforcement than we've seen in recent years? This time, let's begin with Shannon.
Thank you. So first, I agree that it is not humane or compassionate for people to be forced to live outside on the street. With that said, no, I do not support the camping ban. As I mentioned in my introduction, I and a group of community researchers have found that it is an extreme waste of money. It costs between $5,000 to $20,000 every time we conduct a sweep or enforcement of the camping ban, and that was just the information that our community researchers could find. Because of our advocacy, the city auditor has agreed to put that in his auditing report, and those full numbers will come out this April. Additionally, the companies that we are contracting with to enforce the camping ban, the environmental hazmat services, do so often in an extremely violent and dehumanizing way. We have on record people giving testimony that their wheelchairs have been put in the trash or crushed, their medical equipment has been taken. And additionally, when we push people around, it makes it very hard for service providers to be able to connect with people and provide needed services that do get folks into housing. I have worked directly with Colorado Village Collaborative to support folks that are camping to be able to get into safe outdoor spaces. So those are some of the solutions that I'm supportive of, which is changing zoning codes so that we can have more permanent safe outdoor spaces, motel acquisitions, which I saw in one of the articles that y'all shared before this, master leasing is another solution that I would be supportive of, where the city leases spaces that folks can live in, and it ultimately ends up being cheaper than what we are currently doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah?
So, for the past couple of years, two and a half years, I've worked with an outreach group that does outreach and resource connection to unhoused communities. I've worked in these encampments for the past two and a half years, and I've witnessed a lot of sweeps over the course of that time. I believe that the urban camping ban enforcement of camping, enforcement of a camping ban is an important tool in keeping our community safe. I think that the enforcement of our camping ban has failed in that it hasn't actually minimized the existence of camps in the, in the city. And my observation of these, of these sweeps, as I have seen them, we have DPD and we have Dottie cleaning the street, and I think that we're missing a huge opportunity with our encampment decommissions. Where is, where are resources? Where is case management? Where is the unified approach to ensuring that people have access to the resources that they need? The challenges facing people living on the street are diverse and varied and intersectional. We have addiction, we have mental health, we have being wrapped up in criminal justice issues that prevent you from getting housing or from finding jobs. We need to combine, to coordinate our approach to enforcement of our camping ban with better communication and better coordination between city services, between nonprofit services, between private recovery treatment, and our law enforcement. We're missing a huge opportunity to collect data during encampment sweeps. We're missing a huge opportunity to approach people in a way that opens them up to accepting resources. My experience has been that there is a great many people that we can help with the right approach, with the right tone, and with the right offerings of resources. So I would like to see a robust enforcement of the camping ban, but to see that enforcement paired with services that are evidence-based and supported by city leadership.
Thank you. Margie Morris?
Thank you. I'm also in favor of enforcing the camping ban. Not only is it not safe for the neighborhood, but individuals who are experiencing homelessness have a lot more risk around crime and safety and health for being on the streets, and so we really should do better. What I envision for the camping enforcement is something that's very different from what we're doing today, and you've heard some of that from my colleagues here already, but I would use a triage approach. So triage, when you go to, say, the emergency room, you know, they check you out, you know, where do you fall, on how urgent your case is, and then you see the most urgent first. I would do that with the camping ban enforcement, looking at encampments that are providing the highest risk to the communities around them. I would then make sure that we had full street teams of clinicians, community health nurses, mental and behavioral health services, addiction services, that are reaching out to the encampments even before the abatement is announced and certainly during that seven-day period, to start building some trust with the individuals who are living in those encampments, begin to understand the dynamics. Folks who are in encampments often build very strong social relationships with those in the encampments, and so we want to make sure we retain those and don't put those at risk. But we start identifying where those individuals are on that triage path and begin treatment and intake for those who really need services most urgently. And for others, what we need to do is identify a place for them to go, not just tell them that they need to leave that block, but that we will identify a place for them. And I am a big fan of the safe outdoor spaces for that reason. They are comparable in many ways to the encampments on the streets, but yet they have a lot of services, water, bathrooms, that type of thing. And so I think that's a good first step. And then we would provide transportation to the SOS, the tiny house community, whatever it happens to be, so that they aren't losing their belongings. And the last thing is, I think we want to make sure that we're using the By Name List. It's already being used by MDHI and all of the nonprofit organizations that are feeding into, into MDHI for housing. And so I think with those, we'll find some resolution.
Thank you. Chris Hines?
Thank you. And thank you for creating this conversation back in 2011. So it's, 2012, thank you. It's not okay for anyone to be on our streets, particularly those on our streets. Having the advantage of actually being in office, I know that we don't use the camping ban. What we do, all of the invocations of cleanups or sweeps or traumatic displacements, whatever you want to call them, they're actually an invocation of a public health emergency. And, and so we don't use the camping ban. What we do is we see, we document as a city that suddenly there are rats, feces, needles, propane tanks, and, you know, other things, lots of trash that are in an area. And it's not okay for anyone to live in an area that, that has all of these, these public health concerns. And so, so to answer, I think what the question actually is, I do support that we make sure that our public health is preserved and, and make sure that, that our city is clean and safe. That said, in 2013, we had $0 for, for any sort of affordable housing. When I started in 2019, our shelters were only part-time. We didn't have any option for people with pets or partners. We also didn't have any options for non-congregate living. We only had shelters, and they only fit the model that the city wanted. So now what we're doing, since I've started, now if you have a partner, you can go into a shelter with your partner. If you have a pet, there are dog runs in the shelter as well. We also just bought a hotel, excuse me, motel, last month for non-congregate living. And so what we're doing is we're creating short-term solutions, like, like better shelter options, buying hotels for non-congregate living, and the best solution for our unhoused is housing, and certainly working to, to allow us to build a whole lot more housing in our city, because the best way to get them off the street is to, is to get them housed. The last thing I'd say is, just today, we did the grand opening of the Divergent Center, which gives people another option. Instead of jail, they go to a purpose-built place to give everyone the resources they need to survive and thrive.
All right. Thank you all for answering that question. And we're going to jump into question two right away, and it is around long-term plans for getting help for those suffering with addiction and mental health illnesses. And I'll just say this, that some of you have already started to answer this question, and I will give you another opportunity for question one that said, with the camping ban and the severe camping we see on the streets, what sort of enforcement mechanism would you like to see? So you guys kind of talked about that, but I just wanted to, you got 2 minutes and 30 seconds, so maybe think about some of that enforcement, because I know most of this room is really concerned about that, right? So here's a question. What is your plan to get those suffering from mental illness and drug addiction into treatment? Do you support involuntary treatment, similar to New York City, what New York, New York City has announced? And we'll start with Noah.
This is a great question. I think this is what needs to be the conversation around homelessness. We need to be planning for long-term solutions. And I'm reminded of one of the most robust recovery treatment programs in the city, which I think is largely unknown by city leadership, and is just somebody that I met in my work in encampments. The organization's called ANAEO, and it builds cultures around recovery. So this is dealing with the problems of incompetency in jails. So one of the big challenges that we have is people get arrested for survival crimes or crimes related to homelessness. They're deemed incompetent or unable to stand trial, and then they are sent to jail because they can't actually see their case through. What happens then is that they're supposed to go to a hospital to get support, to regain competency, but we don't have room in our hospital. So what happens is they end up back on the street. ANAEO is an organization that's partnered with the city and with jails to give outpatient treatment that allows individuals to participate in sober living. They build a community of support. They offer peer mentorship, job opportunities. They connect individuals with jobs that they're capable of doing. And over time, they build a culture around recovery, mobility, and productivity. And this organization is also then purchasing apartments in and around the city, and they then offer those apartments as leasable properties to the people who complete their program. then offer those apartments as leasable properties to the people who complete their program. So you're you're building a culture of individuals who are able to work their way up and through treatment and into a productive state and in contribution to our community. If we fail to do that, and we just put people in housing, my ride-alongs with DPD, my ride-alongs with paramedics, and my ride-alongs with fire have revealed that many of the places we are putting people in with housing vouchers and no service and no culture of recovery end up being really scary suffering places and is a huge expense on the city. So we need to build cultures of recovery. Programs don't help people. Relationships do. We need city leadership that is forward-facing, accessible, and interested enough in this subject to identify strong programs, to champion those programs, and to make sure they receive city support. And we can address the extended problems around homelessness that way.
Thank you. Margie Morse?
Thank you. I agree. I think these most resistant individuals to moving into treatment are definitely going to be a challenge. There's no doubt about that. But I will start out by saying, I am not a supporter of involuntary holds under any circumstances. They didn't work in 1987 when Mayor Koch did them. It was, in fact, an abject disaster. There's no evidence showing good results from those. And I don't think we should replay that, rinse and repeat. We've already done it. We need to try something new. One thing we do have that has good results here in Denver is a youth diversion program. So for youth who have addictions, drug misuse, or severe mental health, we provide the opportunity for them to enter a diversion program before charges are pressed. They have the opportunity to work with a case manager, to create a treatment plan that is specific for them, and that if they complete the treatment plan, then charges will not be pressed, and they will avoid having that record with them, and will be receiving treatment. We have incredible results from that. Eighty-five percent of the youth who were offered that completed the program. Of those, eighty-two percent then had no additional involvement with the judicial system for a year, which says together that works out to about a 71% success rate. That is enormous. I mean, I have worked in these fields long enough to tell you that a 71% success rate is stellar. So I'd love to see us expand that beyond youth and into adults. Now, what I'll also tell you is that Boulder already does have a mental health diversion program for adults, and it's working well. And so we should look to them about their learnings from that and how we can expand it here in Denver. The challenge is that that comes with costs. And in fact, it was being, they were looking at it at multiple, I think it was four or five places across the state, and all but Boulder lost their funding, and it hasn't been continued. But it also shows great success. So I would like to see more of that. And I want to make sure that we're thinking about prevention on the front end, because if we're not preventing on the front, we're never going to have a solution at the end. And what I would say about prevention is, right now, Denver, Colorado, I'm sorry, is dead last out of states ranked for mentally healthy states.
Thank you. Chris.
Thank you. I want to thank Margie for the for that answer. I think she's spot on. So right now, our police have three options. If they come, if they encounter someone with an addiction or mental health episode, and the options are to do nothing, which gets you nothing. They can issue a ticket, which also gets you nothing. Or they can remove the individual and take them to jail. I mentioned the aid center. It's an alternative intake diversion center. Its grand opening was today. This is something that I've been working on since I took office. It has already been, its soft opening was in November, but its grand opening was at 2:00 PM today, and it's at 13th and Alati in lovely District 10. And it is exactly what Margie was talking about. We actually stole a gentleman from the city of Los Angeles, also has had their issues with people experiencing homelessness. And that is exactly what the Divergent Center is meant to do. A police officer can take someone to the Divergent Center instead of jail, and that area is filled with social workers, nonprofit agencies, mental health, and addiction counselors, and provides the services for someone, also removes that individual from the, you know, the friction point of, you know, whatever the police were called for in the first place. And so we have seen a lot of success. Seventy-one percent. I don't I don't know that statistic myself, but but there has been a lot of success. The other thing that I would say is that we also have, that was a police opportunity to remove someone to the Divergent Center. Another thing that we're working on that I care a lot about are the STAR program. That didn't exist when I started. Then we went through a pilot, and now we added another $3.4 million to the STAR program just last month. So now we have 10 vehicles, 16 teams that can work 24/7/365. They have a civilian vehicle with a paramedic and mental health professional that go respond to 311 or 911 or non-emergency calls and provide actual subject matter expertise with addiction and mental health to the people who are experiencing that addiction and mental health episode. It's had a lot of success. We've become a national model, and I think we should continue to encourage it, as well as the Divergent Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as was said earlier, when we have public health emergence, we're talking about public health emergencies is something that came up in the last question. It's also in this question. So public health emergencies require public health solutions. When we're talking about people that, when we're talking about encampments where we have fecal matter or trash, that's because we haven't provided a public health solution, which would be bathrooms or trash service. Here, when we're talking about public health emergencies around mental illness or substance misuse or use, that's also because we haven't provided public health solutions. So currently, we don't have enough spaces for people who want these services, right? For people who want the services. So there's a question within here about involuntary treatment. No, I agree with Margie. I'm not supportive of that. I am supportive of people's bodily autonomy. What I am supportive of, that is also in New York City, is a plan that they have around safe consumption sites. And here in Denver, a group, the Colorado, the CCJRC, Colorado Criminal Justice Reform Coalition, had an opportunity to visit one of these sites, and I got to learn a lot from them about their visit. It is a city building where folks are able to legally use drugs, but also there are many other services offered in these buildings. There's mental health support. There's acupuncture. There are other offices where folks can have, you know, connect with a social worker. The other thing about it is that it's loved by neighbors, and there have been no overdoses at these sites. There's a state bill, there's a bill in the State House right now that would help clear the way so that we could do that here in the city of Denver. And I'm a proponent of that. I'm a proponent of putting more money towards a mental health regional treatment facility. And that is where I'd like to see us put our dollars into public health solutions.
All right. Thank you all. Question three dives in a little bit more to the history in Denver on ending homelessness. And so even though Denver has spent many millions of dollars to address homelessness over the past 18 years, since Denver's Road Home Program first began, our homeless population has increased. Some other cities have seen declines over the same period of time. Aurora has recently proposed a shift from housing-first model to one in which it seeks better to address the root causes of homelessness. They propose a model which continues to provide housing assistance to people who can be successful. For others who need more help, Aurora's shelter-first, treatment-first, job-first concepts require treatment and a job where possible before earning housing. Here's a question. Clearly, what we have been doing hasn't ended homelessness. Would you support a program, someone, or what Aurora is considering, and support contracts and service providers that pay for recovery results rather than housing results? If not, what is your plan? For this question, we will begin with Margie.
All righty. As far as paying for results, and it sounds great, I know it does. But I have been at the leadership level with social services for, I don't know, 15 years. And I will tell you, recovery is not linear. It simply isn't. We're all familiar with Alcoholics Anonymous. I think we've seen enough movies and know enough people, you know, that individuals will go into treatment, and then, you know, they hit bumps, and then they regress, then they go back in. The same is true for all sorts of addictions. And so we need to make sure that we are there when people need us, and not just simply for success. So I'll start with that. Also, we'd really need to be thinking about, you know, part of the reason we have the homelessness crisis that we have is because we don't have affordable housing in the city. We don't have it. We're 50,000 units behind meeting the need in the city, and at least 20,000 of those have to be low-income units. But that's going to take a while. And so there are all kinds of things around fast-tracking that and getting that online. But my vision for homelessness is rare and brief, and I want to use something called collective impact. You may have heard about efforts called Built for Zero. Basically, what it is, is bringing all the stakeholders together with one point of measurement and accountability. And I would like to see that in city council. Right now, homelessness is in with other committees. I think we need to elevate it. If we're going to be serious about it, we're going to have a city council working committee on homelessness. And that is where we are going to bring together the entire ecosystem that intersects with homelessness, housing, law enforcement, job training, job placement, of course, all of the social and human services at the at the table, leaders from our nonprofit organizations, RNOs, like the folks in here, leadership coming in, and really setting goals that make sense for our city and that are achievable and that we're committed to them, how we're going to measure them, how we're going to report on them. Those will be public-facing dashboards. And those teams then will break down into working teams and start working on some of those components. We absolutely see good results with this across the country in all kinds of things, academic achievement for youth, homelessness. Bergen County, New York, used this model and brought their homelessness, their population of people experiencing homelessness down to almost zero. So it's possible, and we can do it here in Denver, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of going to Houston several months ago with several people from the city of Denver, also the city of Aurora, and a few other county commissioners. And so I accompanied Mayor Kaufman of the city of Aurora to Houston. We wanted to understand how Houston had been so successful in taking people from the street and put them into housing. They had housed more than 12,000 people who were formerly on the streets when I when I was there, or by the time I had gotten there. And so I heard Mayor Kaufman's proposal for a shelter-first model. I know that this is something that I disagree with the leadership of Dona and Low Dona about, but I do still think that a housing-first model is the right answer. The best thing for our unhoused is to give them housing. That said, in 2013, we had no money for affordable housing in the city. Now we have a purpose-built tax. We've voted here in Denver to tax ourselves for a dedicated Affordable Housing Fund. We have an entire agency that's dedicated to housing stability. In 2023, we have more than a quarter billion dollars in dedicated in our budget specifically for housing. Government's slow. We're behind the eight ball. But but we are coming back, and we're making sure that we have an all-of-the-above approach, including buying a motel last month for for housing, but also making sure for housing the unhoused. Two other things about Houston. First, they said what they did is they took entire communities at once. So instead of just taking one or two people from one encampment and housing them, they took the whole group. The group was there, you know, connected together for a reason. And and that, I think, is is something that we've been missing, is we haven't been taking an entire community into housing at the same time. If I couldn't go with my partner into housing, I wouldn't go. And then and then the second thing I would say is that this this has to be a regional approach. The city and county of Denver has been going alone, and we need a truly regional approach. And that's what Denver or Houston found had a lot of success.
Thank you.
So the root cause of homelessness is a lack of affordable housing, truly affordable housing. So when we're talking about that we need to build 50,000 units in our city, that's for people who make between $20,000 to $50,000 a year. And one of the primary ways that we're building affordable housing is through low-income housing tax credit housing, which is built by private developers. I work on a low-income housing tax credit project that will be owned by a nonprofit organization in Mont Belo. So I share this because often on these projects, we don't get enough units at that deeply affordable level. So one of the things that I am a very strong proponent of is creating a social housing developer. And this is an idea that recently passed in Seattle just a couple days ago. So what that would do is allow the city to become the developer of housing, and then build these units, and then any profit that comes from that goes back into a pot where we can continue to build more affordable housing. It also works much like a Lytech model, because there are low rents for folks, and there are folks that have higher salaries and can pay more and can offset those rents. The people that we are seeing become unhoused are children and families and elders. So we need housing for those folks. We certainly need housing that's also permanent supportive housing, right? So that in a housing-first approach, that is what we need. We need to house people, and we also need to provide folks that need them with services that they need. The other things here that I would just give you a laundry list is rent control, rental assistance, just cause eviction, legal eviction defense, apartment acquisition funds, cooperative housing, and community land trust. All those things we could talk about for on and on, but I got my yellow card, so I'm going to pause.
All right. Thank you.
Noah?
Some great ideas from my colleagues here, and I want to echo the importance of affordable housing, and the cities need to invest in that type of that type of initiative. But I do think that we have some concerns around the way we decide to treat individuals who are unhoused, and we have a quality control problem. We've invested hundreds of millions of dollars to try and address this problem, and it's only gotten worse. I think what we need is a city council that is interested in learning as much as possible about the resources provided our community by nonprofit service providers, by for-profit service providers, and by city services. I think with a better understanding of the needs of our community, the needs of the people living on the street, we can identify the right kinds of services that can provide the help that individuals living on the street actually need. I would love to see, you know, what I'd love to do is, if elected to office, I would be interested in staffing a social worker to be a community liaison, specifically intent on understanding all of the services offered to our unhoused community in our district, and building strong relationships and understanding what need is this particular service serving, and how can we create a continuity of care? Because we cannot continue to offer a housing voucher for someone to go to East Colfax, and then a job placement up on Santa Fe, and then a mental health service downtown. The needs of our community are complex, and that runaround doesn't help anybody. So we can fund it as much as we want, but it will not solve our problems. We need a coordinated effort, and we need to identify strong service providers, and leverage programs and support for those particular services that we know are offering that kind of support that can actually get people stable, productive, and back in a sustainable place. Because I have a little bit of time, I want to reiterate that my experience living or working with unhoused people, I have met people who were given housing and ended up back on the street. I have met people who had housing, but they kept a tent on the street, because that's where their community is. So the idea that we do not, that housing solves this problem for us, my ride-alongs with fire and paramedics shows it moves suffering indoors. And what we need to do is make sure we're providing what people And what we need to do is make sure we're providing what people need and building communities of recovery.
All right. Thank you. We're going to take a break, and this is, we'll take a fifteen-minute break. We're going to allow the candidates to use the restroom, and please give them space to do so. And we'll be back in fifteen minutes. It's just getting good. All right. We're going to get started again. We're on question four. If you're keeping track, we're going to do seven questions and then allow the candidates to have closing statements. So this next question is around crime rates and Denver Police Department authorized strength. So between 2019 and 2021, forty states experienced decreases in their total crime rate, while Colorado was one of ten states with increases. ours was the fourth highest increase of those states. During this time, Denver's auto theft rate increased one hundred thirty-eight percent, and Colorado has the highest car theft rate in the country. Denver has also experienced increases in the murder rate, the rate of aggravated assault, and in many other crime categories. Before his retirement, DPD Chief Pazin stated to Abdona that "a higher police presence through substantially higher levels of officer staffing could prevent crime from happening." Rather than reactively using officers to arrest people after committing crimes, police departments across the country are having difficulty hiring officers. Currently, DPD's authorized strength is one thousand six hundred and thirty-nine officers, with a current effective strength of one thousand four hundred and forty-nine. Here's a question. Do you believe the current authorized strength of DPD is too low, too high, or just about right? What actions would you support for either attracting more officers or downsizing the police force? We'll start with Chris Hines. We'll start with Chris Hines, but now we'll reverse the order, going with Margie Morris next. Good note, by the way.
All right. For too long, we've relied on our police to be our everything, our utility knife. Relied on them to go everywhere and do everything. And so I am very happy to say that I supported the STAR program. As I mentioned before, it did not exist when I took office. It went from nothing to a pilot, to a strong component of our public safety implementation. And so that, along with helping to fund other ways to combat the causes of the reason why police go to various calls, is really the focus of what I'm working on. So STAR program, rental and utility assistance, funding, you know, to help keep people in their homes if they're struggling to make ends meet, raising the minimum wage. That affected more than one in nine Denverites positively, and it's crazy that it affected so many, but it did. And we provide eviction defense a hundred percent of the time to anyone who is in economic need. That was a law that I voted for and helped pass. That said, there are people here on this panel who want to abolish the police. I don't agree with that. It is important for us to have police. It is important for us to have an operable police force. We have victims of domestic violence. We have people who, you know, our system is set up so that people are innocent until proven guilty, but once they commit a crime, they should face the consequences. And so it's very important for us to have a police force. We have not had an increase in strength in our police force since 2013. Meanwhile, we've had more than one hundred thirty thousand residents move to the city of Denver, and that's not even talking about all the workers that have come to Denver as well. So in many ways, we've already defunded the police in our city. A city's core role is public safety, and so forty to sixty percent of any city's budget goes to public safety. Meanwhile, our percentage is at thirty-six percent. So it is time.
It is time. Thank you. Margie?
Thank you. I do believe that police are critical partners in our communities and in our district. I do think that we need to be supporting our police, and I believe there's about a seven percent, although I think this shows about eleven percent gap in numbers right now. I think we really need to work with police around training and support so that we have a better opportunity to both recruit and retain police. I think longevity is important, community policing, knowing the community. I'm a huge fan of PALS, which is the Police Athletically. It's a national association where police, you know, run sports clubs with the kids or go to the elementary schools and do the bicycle, you know, bicycle tune-up day with your, you know, friendly police officer. Those types of things really do build trust in the community and create a level of understanding between residents and law enforcement. That being said, I am also a huge fan of the alternative policing that we have for some of these mental health and less critical crises that are in our city. So the STAR van, and I love that they are now at ten, because one of the issues was they were only Monday through Friday, nine to five. And so now that they're going to be twenty-four seven, seven days a week, I think the great results we've already seen will only increase. We have coresponders, so a clinician and a law enforcement officer, and now we have parks, parks, rangers with a clinician. So we're really doing some innovative and creative things that are showing really good results. I can only imagine, and I haven't had the chance yet, it's on my list, but that the police would be excited to have partners taking some of those lower levels so that they can focus on some of the more important, the car theft and the gun violence and those types of things. I did work in gun violence quite a bit, gun violence aversion myself. And what I will say, are there things that in our community we can do to reduce gun violence? Part of that is giving everyone an opportunity for job training and have a job. Part of that is making sure we have support for education. Part of that is mentorship. There's a reason why OJJDP provides all of the money for mentoring in the United States from the federal government. That's the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention.
All right. Thank you. Noah?
So I just want to start with a story that was really impactful to me. I tutored a young man on East Colfax. I tutored him for a few years, and I saw him testify at a council meeting recently to report to council that his mother had been shot in a drive-by, and it took DPD forty-five minutes to get there. A representative from the police department said, you know, "Our officer deficit is impacting our response times in high-risk communities." So I think it's important that we acknowledge how essential that nine-one-one number is, and that when you need a police officer, somebody you trust should be there to show up. Somebody who is well-trained, somebody who ideally has touchpoints inside of our community, somebody who has partnered with alternative response teams when applicable. So I will echo the things that my colleagues have said up here. I'm interested in co-response. I'm interested in alternative response, but I'm really interested in building stronger connections between law enforcement and our community. I think the narrative we have about law enforcement doesn't acknowledge the complexity of that job. I think that city council can take a stronger role in telling that story, in highlighting the complex service that law enforcement offers so many people each and every day. I did a ride-along with Precinct Six a few months ago at this point and was very impressed by the compassionate and patient service that that officer gave to citizens of our city all day long. And I want to see cadet programs in schools become more robust. Let's bring in our young people. Let's build connections between young people and the officers who serve our community. And let's allow those young people to find purpose and passion in public service, just like Commander Sanchez, who directs, you know, is the chief of patrol, Chief Sanchez, who's the chief of patrol for DPD, who was a Lincoln High School graduate. I want more people from our community policing our community, and that way we can build trust and improve our public safety outcomes. More investment in law enforcement. Let's make sure we have the best police officers in this city and that they know it.
Thank you. Shannon?
Thank you. So as has been hinted at, I am an abolitionist. But I'm here to tell you that there's nothing to be afraid of with that. And maybe some of you who are here are also abolitionists, and you don't know it yet. So I think often when we hear this word, we think about people who want to tear things down. And to me, being an abolitionist is about dreaming of the world that we want to live in and working together to co-create it. This is about being hard on systems and kind to people. And I'm talking about kind to people who are in police and policing. I'm also talking about being kind to people who are suffering from poverty. And so when we listen to groups like the Task Force to Reimagine Police, what they are telling us is that the way we are going to end crime and violence in our city is by addressing poverty, education, mental health, and housing. So I believe that we're seeing difficulty hiring in our police force, just like we're seeing difficulty hiring in, you know, many places in our city and in other businesses. So what I'd like to see is investment into alternative responder programs, not co-responder programs. The STAR program has been shown to reduce crime by thirty-four percent in places where it's been implemented, and it costs less. So it costs a hundred and fifty-one dollars per response, as opposed to six hundred and forty-six dollars per response by the police. The other thing that STAR is asking for, people that have started STAR, it was started by Dasher and the Denver Justice Project, is that they would like community control, much like the Citizen Oversight Board with the Office of the Independent Monitor. We also need a direct line to this program. This is what our community experts are asking for, and I believe we should respond accordingly.
All right. Thank you. We're now going to go to the economy. As I think all of you know, downtown since COVID has been severely impacted by a loss of visitors. Tourism is critical to the economic vitality of Denver. In particular, downtown Denver is critical to the tourism industry with Convention Center, Denver Center Performing Arts, Sixteenth Street Mall and more. But conventions and tourists are staying away because of the negative perceptions of safety. A coalition of public, private, nonprofit partners and law enforcement recently announced "Together We Will," coordinated strategy and infusion of resources to address public health, safety, and challenges in downtown Denver. Here's your question. What should be done to attract more conventions, tourists to downtown? And we'll start with Margie Morris.
Thank you. First, I would like to give a shout out to that DDP and multi-organizational collaboration downtown who really came together during COVID to re-envision the communities where they lived and ensure that there was safety and clean streets and good things, because there are a lot of businesses downtown. A lot of what they did in that collaboration is what I'm talking about doing at the citywide level, housed in city council. I think collaboration and coordination so that we know where gaps in services are and overlaps, and we can just be doing a better job of providing those services, I think is really important. But we are, we do have businesses downtown that are hanging by a thread. Some have already shuttered, others are struggling. They're having trouble keeping their employees, because employers are afraid that they have personal safety concerns being downtown. They're losing clients for the same reasons. We have residents, I've talked to so many residents who, you know, already have a place, and they're going to be moving to it, or maybe they're moving outside of the core of our district to out to other parts of the city. And that has a real cost in tax revenue, and that's what funds the services that all of us have talked about all night that we so desperately need in our city. So it is important to keep it vibrant. So I'm going to take a page out of Shannon's book, and I'm going to list a whole bunch of things in rapid-fire order. One, I think we should look at retaining major arteries in our downtown and possibly, or at least consider shutting some of the less critical roads and turning those into big, open spaces that we can use for, say, a food truck market, that we can have a whole entire block that's just kid-focused things to do. And gosh, maybe we can get the Children's Museum to move down into the Central Business District. Think about expanding the plans already for the Fifty-two Eighty Trail, making them wider and more inclusive. How about expanding the Beer Trail into the Central Business District? I mean, I think we need to be creative on some of these things. But at the end of the day, I think what we really need to be doing is bringing people downtown. I think making sure that downtown is safe and vibrant is going to bring the most people downtown. And I will just throw out there this morning, because I have a good friend in Hong Kong. Hong Kong is giving away five hundred dollar tickets to go visit them. Maybe we should do that in Denver.
Thank you. Noah?
So I've lived adjacent to downtown most of my life. I had my first date at the United Artists at Movie Theater on Sixteenth Street Mall. And it's really important to me that that space becomes a space where families are welcome to return to the city. I think that addressing our public safety concerns, putting a city council office on Sixteenth Street Mall with social worker outreach and connective services to address our homelessness crisis, I think is key. We have to solve that problem. So bringing people downtown, I think DDP's Pop Up Denver, which is giving opportunity to young and diverse entrepreneurs to come and get a toehold on Sixteenth Street Mall. They don't come to Sixteenth Street Mall for the McDonald's or the Subway. Let's give them something more interesting. Let's give them something that represents our character. Let's invite a renaissance to our downtown area. I think in that way, we can champion and bring in conventions and festivals and all kinds of things. But we need to be acknowledging the ecosystem, the environment, and we need to be able to facilitate the kind of experiences that we all live in Denver for, right? This is all about making memories with one another. And I think with that tone and tenor and that approach, what kinds of memories are we providing our families and our visitors? I think we can have a really exciting future in this city. Multimodal transit. I mean, I'm going to echo Margie here. We got to find ways that people can get downtown without driving a vehicle. I want to see shared streets. I want to see e-bikes and discounted travel and connecting our rail system with our bus rapid transit. I want to see all of these things work together, and I want to see a city council person who will champion more conventions to come here. I want a national speech and debate tournament to take place at our convention center. I think that would be a wonderful thing to offer our city and to build on that tax revenue and allow us to address these other concerns that that tax revenue allows us to.
Thank you. Shannon?
Thank you. So one of the important things to me about Denver, one of the things that I love and has helped make it a home for me is connections to small businesses. And I think that's one of the things that makes Denver really unique. So I am a huge proponent of supporting those small businesses to flourish downtown. When I first moved here, I had the great opportunity to work at Hope Tank, which is a small business that sells gifts and also supports local nonprofits. But I also saw that that store is also a community connection place. It's a third space for people. And so it's really providing a service to our community beyond just selling goods. It's also a gathering place for community members. So I think that we need to support those small businesses and their ability to flourish, which can look like, you know, legacy business ordinances to keep small businesses downtown. That could look like a commercial community land trusts and a commercial rental registry. One of the things that we're hearing from small businesses- One of the things that we're hearing from small business owners is that rent is very high, and they also want to pay their employees a thriving wage. But the combination of those two things is really hard. And so we need to be investing in these, in these small businesses. We see downtown that we're investing in these entrepreneurial spaces for small businesses to get a kickstart, but are we investing in the sustainability of those small businesses to be able to stay there for a longer period of time? Additionally, I think that we need to be listening to workers in these spaces. I have walked around a little bit today and yesterday and talked to folks, and a lot of the workers that live here or that work here live in Capitol Hill because they find naturally occurring affordable housing there. So I think we really need to be listening to workers here as well. And I'm going to wrap it up. I think that's the list, end of my list of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. There are some advantages of being the incumbent in office, and I would, so I'll get into that in a second. The Together We Will press conference, I saw several of you there. So it was good to, good to see you there. The Denver, Denver's downtown is both the hub of, you know, this, this talks about the convention centers, but it's the hub of government, business, tourism, and culture for the entire state of Colorado. So it's critical that we make sure that our downtown is vibrant and that we have a positive and safe and a great experience for, for everyone who wants to go to our art museum or DCPA or, you know, spend money along the 16th Street Mall. So one of the things we have to do is, is make sure that the space is accessible and safe. We're spending $160 million on the 16th Street Mall. That's $10 million a block. It's kind of a mess right now, as everyone knows here, but, but once it gets done at the end of next year, that's when it's supposed to get done, it will, it will be beautiful. And it will be the end of next year, for sure. But it'll be beautiful, and it'll be a broad and inviting experience for us to, you know, to have a, to bring people back. The DDPs pop up Denver, I voted to fund that. I think it's great when we can encourage small businesses and minority and women-owned businesses and local shops to, to come downtown. We can have them front and center for all the people who come from the nearly 220 direct destinations that our airport has. And I'm, I'm lucky enough to serve as the chair of the Biz Committee, which, which has our Economic Development Office, which has our airport. And so having some of these conversations are some of the things that I'm working on, the 5280 Trail, that's a great idea. I was the one who helped get that funding on the bond, and I'm really excited that the first fully funded segment of the 5280 Trail is going to go in. We have $7 million for that. E-bikes, I voted for that as well, and I think it's great. We've become an immediate national leader in alternatives to transit like e-bikes. The, the, the speech and debate tournament, I think that's amazing. That's a wonderful idea. As someone who went to state and debate twice in high school, let's do it.
All right. Thank you. We're going to keep on with this focus on the economy and, and economic engine of downtown. But we're going to turn it from the convention focus and into business. As you know, the mayor and City Council previously collaborated in years past to attract businesses to Denver, particularly corporate headquarters, regional headquarters, which employ thousands of people. But now we are seeing businesses, small, medium, and large, leave Denver and move to Cherry Creek, move to Greenwood Village, and sometimes out of the state. What role, here's the question, what role does City Council have in returning downtown Denver to being a desirable place for businesses to locate or at least remain? Noah, we're going to start with you.
I think City Council has a very important role in ensuring that. And I just want to tell a story that I want you to hear. Imagine that you have, you've got a young entrepreneur who lives in a converted office building on 18th and California, and they have a young family. They leave that building, they jump on an e-bike that they've got parked outside, they've got a whole rack of them for anybody who lives in the city to get around. And that person goes to a place like the Commons on Champa, which is an incubator for young business owners and people who want to see new ideas and new opportunities to build experiences for our city, come together and come with, up with ideas. That person's able to grow a business and hire people from our city who are able to access downtown through multimodal transit and not using their cars. They come down and they bring their kids with them. We have a daycare on 16th Street Mall for city workers and people who work in the downtown core. That person is able to grow that business. And because we have space downtown, that business explodes in employees and opportunity and the whole city, everywhere we are, everybody's drawn to come downtown again for arts, for culture, for opportunity. You know, that story's not possible right now. But I think with the right imagination, with the right initiative, with some curiosity and good storytelling in council, I think that vision is possible in the next 10 years. And I want to be a champion of that story in our downtown core and to make that dream a reality.
Thank you. Shannon?
I like this question because it also has inside of it, what is the role of council? So I just want to take a minute to talk about that. What is the role of council? Well, in the city charter, it says that council members can do three things. It's not just voting on bills. It's also making bills. It's making laws and it's changing laws, and it's approving the budget, which is offering amendments. So what can we do? And it's also, you know, what's not written in the charter is being a good community organizer. I think as we are seeing a rise of people who are starting to have the opportunity to work from home, we have to think in a really innovative way about reimagining downtown because we might not see folks come back to the office as people are realizing, you know what, it works a little bit better for my life to have this flexibility to sometimes work from home. So what might we do with some of these buildings that we have downtown? Let's create a fund where we can acquire some of these office buildings and rehabilitate them into housing. I think that that is hugely important. Additionally, as has been mentioned, we do need to work on ways that people can get in and out of downtown on multimodal ways. I, you know, actually walked here today from my apartment, but that's not always possible for everyone because of, you know, how the sidewalk is plowed. If you are not able to walk and you're taking the bus, maybe that's inconvenient for you. So I think we can be investing and partnering more with RTD. In Boulder, they have the hop, skip, and jump line, so we see investment in more circulator routes. We could also be investing in better pay for RTD drivers and also for free fares. So I do think that City Council has a huge role in reimagining and revitalizing downtown, and it's about being creative together.
Thank you. Chris?
So there, there are several things that we can do. I want to, first, I want to talk about how the mayor and City Council attract corporate headquarters to downtown. We're still doing that. Obviously, the, the COVID has, has impacted a lot of things in how we do business, and this last term has been predominantly through, through COVID. But just in my first term, you know, COVID interrupted a lot of it, but here in the city of Denver, we hosted a delegation from Ukraine before the, that was back in 2019, before Ukraine hit a lot of people's front of mind. We also hosted the city of San Diego, we hosted the city of Tulsa. And just to understand a bit more about how we can get collaboration between the two cities, we can have more businesses from those places come here. And, and then also, it's important to visit other cities as well. I've visited the city of Las Vegas, I've visited New York City, and, and visited Mexico City, and visited with elected officials in each of those places to understand how they're accomplishing their business development and frankly, also to talk about how they're tackling, there are people experiencing homelessness. Other things that we can do, in addition to the Commons on Champa, I'm on the, the board of the Smart Cities Alliance, which is a new majority forward organization. It's an incubator, actually just a couple blocks from the Commons on Champa. So, but the idea there is to, is to take underserved communities, so women, minority-owned businesses, communities of color, but also it includes the disability community. And how can we, how can we have an incubator, an accelerator for, for businesses owned by the new majority and, and have them embrace technology? So it's all centered around 5G adoption and how can we get these organizations, you know, on, onboard? We have applicants from all over the world that, that are here, that, that are coming to, that want to come to the city of Denver. And we have several Israeli companies in the application process, UK, Korea, several, obviously from all over the US as well. But, but this is a way that I personally am working to, to get more, more businesses here to, to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Margie?
David, don't red-guard me. I'm kidding. Yeah, this is a big question. So first of all, I think the efforts to diversify businesses downtown have been amazing and hugely successful. We have to remember that Colorado, after the mining rush, is an oil and gas state and had a boom-bust economy for a really long time. And so kudos to those who came together and said, you know, we can't continue to have this, let's diversify what kind of businesses we have in our city. And that's great. But what I've been hearing from some of those larger companies that are like a VF Corp or someone who's moving a lot of people is housing, you guys, it's housing. They don't have housing for their employees and they're living way outside of Denver. Comes back to housing. For our small businesses who are the heart of our, of our core of our district, you know, nationally, small businesses are 99% of all businesses. I don't know if you guys know that. And they bring in a huge amount of GDP. So, you know, we need to protect that. But the challenges I'm hearing from our small businesses and our bids is permitting, 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 zoning. So we have created bottlenecks in our bureaucracy that are creating real costs from delays and actual costs to our small businesses in making changes, to expand, to get started up. What I would like to see is in that permitting process that we have a fast track, like pre-check versus TSA. Use the fast track lane for permitting, for those things you prioritize. Let that be small businesses in our core. I think that's important. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can as a city, and that definitely falls under City Council to be able to do some of those components. I also want to say yes to daycare, yes to out-of-school time downtown. I think that's going to be bringing businesses here, yes to workforce housing. I know we've got the River Mile that has a pretty healthy workforce housing component, but we need more of that. We need people to be able to live closer to where they work, and I think that's really important. The last thing I want to say is we are like a burgeoning tech and entrepreneur city, and let's keep it up. The Denver Startup Week is super fun. If you guys haven't been, I've been to two. It's amazing. It gets folks from all over the country. As a result, we have had some great businesses here and a lot of unicorns, and we need more.
Thank you. All right. We are, we are a little late, so we're going to move these responses to one minute, okay? So it's, it's been great though. Thank you guys for all of your thoughts on this. All right, this is the last question. And as a Denver City Council former member and seeing the legacy of council members we've had in this city, it's a very important question, and we want to, we want to really hear from you, how you all will use this. The last question is, in 2022, the mayor submitted a budget to the city of $1.66 billion in the general fund, which began January 1st, 2023. This is the question. If elected, what will be your main budget priorities for District 10? And how will you get your colleagues to support your priorities through an amendment, seven votes? Shannon, we'll start with you.
Thank you. One of the big things that I'm a proponent of is co-governance, meaning that we work collaboratively on what our budget priorities are. So we had an opportunity to do that recently with the Participatory Budgeting Project. I run a small community program called How Shit Gets Done in Denver, and we had an event to talk to folks about the budget and get suggestions from folks that they entered into the participatory budgeting process, and one actually won. So we can talk about this later at the happy hour, but I brought a visual aid. This is the budget. This is your budget. So what you want it to be and a City Council person's job is to legislate that. So let's talk about it at the happy hour after.
All right. Thank you. Chris?
All right. A city's core role is public health, safety, and welfare. So if I have to boil it down to one minute, that is our, that is our job as a city, is to ensure that, that our city, that people feel safe getting around our city, that we can walk our dog around the block or hold hands with our partners and, and, and walk around the block. Of course, not me because I can't walk, but you get the idea. And so, so that's, that's what we do as a, as a city. The, the second thing that I would say is, is that it's very important for us to build for future generations. So additional transformative projects like the 16th Street Mall, we have Civic Center Next 100, which is a transformative project. The 5280 Trail, I'm a huge proponent of, and all of that is predominantly here in the city center. So making sure that we have projects like that help break Denver's dependence on cars, that'll be the best for our future generations, climate, physical health.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Margie?
I'd actually focus on three things. Affordable housing and affordable housing and affordable housing. We need affordable housing. We also need to change the conversation. Right now, the conversation about affordable housing is 60 to 120% of AMI. I got news for you folks. Minimum wage puts you at 43% of AMI. If we are not housing people at 43%, we are not solving any problems in this city. So affordable housing, we need to think about rezoning, we need density, we need transit-oriented developments, we need some infill, a lot of things. But affordable housing, all roads lead there. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah?
I agree that affordable housing is of primary concern to me as an educator. I want to make sure that teachers are able to live in the communities they serve. I'm very interested in exploring residential conversion of these empty office buildings. We can do wonderful things to bring families back to downtown if we convert those buildings to house families with housing, family-oriented housing stock. And we can do that by also providing some affordable housing opportunities there. We need to do infill in other areas to ensure that the workforce in this city is able to live in the places they work. I'm also very much concerned about public safety, and I want to make a, I want to, the city has abdicated its responsibility to our young people at the schoolhouse door. I want to see more funding in the budget for after-school programming, for internships, for externships. Let's give our kids something to get excited about, something to be hopeful for, and let's give them an opportunity to avoid the violence that we're seeing every day.
All right. The questions are over, and your closing statements, unfortunately, they're going to have to be one minute so that we can, so we're going to, this is a good test, by the way. So, you know, we'll start with you, Chris, closing statements. Thank you.
My name is Chris Eines. I am so excited to have the honor to have represented District 10 for the nearly past four years. Since I took office, we worked on the STAR program. We started making sure that the police were out of the business of responding to things that don't need police. But meanwhile, we made sure that we have a police force that, that has recruitment and retention that, that is necessary to make sure that we have a, a community that, that can feel safe. So I also care a lot So I also care a lot about, we were talking about affordable housing. I've already put in the 2023 budget, which I voted for, has more than a quarter billion dollars for affordable housing. I'm very excited to, to have another four years to talk about the important, critical factors that face Denver today. So I'm Chris Hines. I would love to have your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Shannon Hoffman, and I would love to earn your vote for Denver City Council District 10. This is the job I'm applying for, and you all are the employer. So you get to decide if I or any of us meet these qualifications that you're looking for. And I hope one characteristic that you're looking for is integrity, which means working with people you don't always agree with. But integrity means living your values everywhere, all the time, and being willing to come to the table with people who think differently from you. So please know that I will always be open and transparent with you when we agree and when we don't. I hope you connect with our People Powered and Heart Centered campaign at Shannon Loves D10 on social media and shannon-hoffman.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah?
So there's a lot of great ideas being talked about up here. And I think your job is to figure out, who do you think is most likely to get these things done? And I want to tell the right story about our district and our city. I'm interested in building relationships from the unhoused person that has a tent set up outside my apartment to the law enforcement officer who works Precinct 6 off Colfax, to the business owner, to the social worker, to the developer who's going to help us solve our housing crisis. I think that we can tell a really beautiful story. And I think we need better storytelling and stronger leadership in council to get that stuff done. I have deep roots in this city. I love the people who live here. And I really want to see a brighter future. I think that we are on the cusp of a great renaissance in Denver. We just need somebody to tell the story. And I'm interested in being that person.
Thank you. Margie?
First, I'm honored to be with this group up here. Everybody has huge hearts and you've got a lot of good choices. I would say Denver can continue to misuse, misuse our precious public health and safety resources with an ineffective and dangerous sweep process for folks living on our streets. Or you can have a councilperson who will bring together the resources for a coordinated, collaborative, and effective, data-driven process to bring real solutions to the homelessness crisis in our city. I hope you've heard that I have the experience. I have the passion. And I'm ready to solve the problems in Denver so that it works for all. I'm asking for your vote and for your support for my campaign. Margie Morris, morrisfordenver.com. Thank you.
Would you give it up for these candidates right now? I just want to say, a lot of these folks disagree. They come from different backgrounds. But this was the most civil, respectful, they shaking head, you know, they're shaking their head in agreement over each other's comments. So I just want to thank you guys for inspiring us in our democracy that is really crumbling all over the place. But you guys, just give them one more hand. That was awesome.
And can we give a shout out to Albus for being a great moderator?
Hey, we have, right before we leave, we have the city clerk's office to talk to us a little bit. Where is, yeah, come on up to talk to us a little bit about FEF and any other announcements you have.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. We just wanted to do some quick reminders about the municipal election. So ballots are going to be mailed to you on the week of March 13th. So keep an eye out for your registration. If you've moved, if you need to update it, please do so. Go to the Colorado Secretary of State's website or denvervotes.org, and you can update your information there. The municipal election is April 4th. Make sure that your ballots are into us by 7:00 PM. You can vote in person. We have 43 drop boxes across the whole city. So you can use any of them. They're secured. They have 24-hour surveillance. So just fill out your ballot, sign it, and put it in. We also, you can vote by mail with one stamp. And we are going to have our mobile voting unit in four different locations. So if you haven't seen it, it's a mobile voting service center that goes around the city. And it's also there in case we have an emergency at one of our VSPCs. And then for the, specifically for candidates for city council, if we don't have a candidate that gets 50% plus one vote, they will go into a runoff, and that runoff will be on June 6. So we will have, most likely have a runoff in June. So keep your eye out for a second ballot in June. And then we'll have the November general on November 7. It's a lot of information. If you want to go to denvervotes.org and find that information, you can get samples of the ballot. You can update your registration. You can find a polling, a voting service center close to you or a drop box, a drop box close to you. And again, thank you so much for hosting this and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And lastly, if you'd give it up for UpDona and LowDona for really sponsoring this event. This is very, very, very well done. All right. Have a great night. Thank you.